Board members, please notice that I passed out two different documents. The first one is the Director's Report. Today upon going through the board packet, we realized that Della printed it before I was complete with it, and that's a Google Doc. So the new hires was not on there. And then there's some numbers on the second page that was left off. So she printed it before I was finished. Did he not get a packet?
Yeah, I got it.
Pass that down to Gary. I thought I laid enough in there. So just make a note of that. Also, I passed out to you all the Innovative Schools Budget Setup. The Cost Centers was left off. There's been no change in the money from the one you got. It was just the Cost Center was left off. And Ms. Casey caught that today, and so we had that corrected before the meeting tonight. The other thing before we get started I'd like to talk about is the government shutdown. As I noted in my Director's Report at this time, it has not affected our federal funds. We have been able to still continue to draw those down. However, Ms. Sherry left me a note today. She just got an email today as far as school nutrition that also runs on federal reimbursement. And so far, it has not affected us, and it shouldn't through October. However, there's supposed to be hopefully a vote tonight because if the government shutdown does prolong, it may affect things like our SNAP funding that comes through nutrition. Okay, so just be aware of that. Back to the board agenda. We did have two bids for the Y E S Park and Lot Seal. We are recommending the low bid for Rollins pavement coatings for $14,000. The 141 Education Freedom Bonus Budget Amendment, that is the amount that we budgeted for the bonus. It's actually less a little bit. Is that right, Ms. Casey? That does include what we received from the state funds as well as what we put for so that all of our employees could have it. And it's actually broke out now by the categories where everybody was paid from. So that's the budget amendment to allow for that bonus that everyone just got paid. We also have a Public School Security Grant Budget Setup. This is a one-time grant that the state is offering. Our district will receive $42,395.98. With that grant, there is the budget narratives on the back of the page. Basically, that is for additional access control, locks, and additional cameras in places that were identified with the school administrators and Mr. Beal. Anything that you do on the public safety grant has to be directly related to your school self-assessment as far as the safety assessment. So it has to be directly aligned to that. So the school safety assessment is done yearly, and it is conducted by the school administrator, the SRO, Mr. Beal. They do a complete walkthrough. I think there's maybe 200 items or something on it. They look at everything from where the dumpsters are in the building to outside lots, wall packs. There's a ton of items on that, safety assessment. But the school principal, the SRO, and Mr. Beal does the walkthrough on that. It's submitted annually. Yeah, and we were actually monitored on ours last year. Homeland Security came through and monitored and give us feedback based on ours on the areas that we marked ourselves as scoring low in. So it's a good way to reflect on and think about your facilities and what aspects might not be as safe as you'd like. Fencing obviously is one of the things on the safety assessment, but there's a ton of other stuff besides just fencing and dumpsters, classroom doors locked. I mean, Mr. Beal, I don't know if you want to speak to anything else on it?
While he's coming up, I want to say this. Three years ago, whenever I went to a couple, three schools and I asked for their emergency operation plan, you know we was 14 years behind on those plans three years ago. And now we're, what, 90, 95% compliant?
They're up to date. They're annually updated now.
Everything's up to date, but we was 14 years out of date on those plans.
These are security assessments that she spoke to is the basis for the justification for the funding that Ms. Christie has identified. And again, it's 220, I think, specific items that's on this security assessment that's done through the Office of Homeland Security here in the state. And so they asked specifically when we submitted a budget as to what we would use the funds for. It had to be items that were listed as some of the deficiencies. And so when we used the, had the grant from two years ago as well as the COPS grant with the cameras, once we made those adjustments, we did another look see to see where we had some deficiencies. And then with this funding, we are looking to improve upon what we had started previously.
Ms. Sterling, one feedback that I shared with Bill, and we passed along to the state. The first year that I was in here and we did the safety assessments, the state sent back to us, compiled all the school's safety assessments within the district and sent it back to us. I shared that with the school board members then, but they have not since did that. They've not sent back like a combination of all the self-assessments to a district.
What I said three years ago, we were, the last time that those plans had been updated in those schools, to best my knowledge, was about 14 years prior to that. They were all out of date. There's a lot of thing goes into those emergency operation plans. It's, well, I won't go into it, but there's a lot goes into it, and it can make a difference, especially if you have a situation occur. One of the main things with emergency operation plans is your contacts and everybody knowing what to do when something happens. And that wasn't, I didn't feel like three years ago that was the case in a lot of instances if we had had situations where we could have acted upon them in the proper way. But since then, she hired you, and we spent a lot of money and done a lot of, lot of work on those plans, and you're telling me they're 100% up to date now as far as?
They are, they are. They're, just recently were distributed as required by law, and so.
They're also submitted, is it July 1st, to the State Departments when we have to submit them yearly now?
Yes, they're always submitted yearly, yes.
Well, you know, there's mandates now that's required by the state. They come and find doors open and so forth and so on. We can actually be fined for that.
That's correct.
It can cost the board money.
That's correct.
So we've got to be on our Ps and Qs on this anymore.
All agree. Now, what's the 220 items then that Homeland Security's got a problem with?
Oh, what, right. What Ms. Christie was alluding to is they did an.
Who do we actually answer to to wind all this up? Is it through the safety assessment through the state, or does Homeland Security pay present at all?
That's what they check. To get where you're at.
Yes, they do an audit. They did an audit last year of the security assessment just to verify that, number one, we're doing it, number two, that what we were seeing is what they were seeing as well. And so based on that, the feedback was very minimal or nonexistent as far as when they did the audit. So, but again, the first year they did it as part of their audit process.
A lot of those items, like fencing, for example, I went to some of the schools and I looked at fencing, and we desperately need that, and it's in the budget this year to do that. But we had, you all, I say we, you all had already identified, like you said, most of those things that Homeland Security came back and said, yeah, we agree that you need to do this. So that's just the next step, and this money here is actually going to help us achieve those goals that we've already been set forth a year or two ago.
Right, I understand that. But it's not mandates? That's just suggestions?
They are, they are recommendations, yes. There's some that are mandatory or priority.
Priority standards.
Standards. And that was the mandate that I had coming into this position. Ms. Christie says, let's focus on those mandatory or those.
And I think there's 80 something of those. We can pull off a copy of the safety assessment for you to look at.
See, I think that would be really good because specialists going into the new budget here shortly.
Some of it was signage. I think you, most of anybody that's been in the new schools would have noticed signage on the doors or the big signs outside.
Yes.
Do you have signage marked? Is there designated tornado shelter? Is that sign within the building? Is there maps within the building? Things like that. So there's, it looks at it from every angle, but I'll be glad to get you a copy of that.
Because it's very confusing when you hear 220 and then mandated or recommended. So, yeah, we definitely want to keep.
Yeah. The only.
But thank you, Ms. Hall.
The only negative thing I've heard from this since it started was one of the policemen talked to me about having access to the schools. I think previously they had a key fob that each one of them were given, and they were, you know, they'd be able to access the school immediately if they got to it, like High Avenue, New York Elementary, wherever. But now, as I understand it, it's in a lock box. They have access to that.
That's correct. There's two lock boxes at each school.
Right.
And it's something that the firefighters knew about. They're called, what are they called?
The national one is a Knox box.
Knox box.
But that's very limited as to the number of keys that they will distribute. It's primarily the fire department folks.
Right.
Where this lock, lock box that we have now, the 911 center has the code. They will provide that information to the responding public safety agents, whether it's fire, police, whatever, ambulance, whatever the case may be.
Right.
And they will have a fob as well as a key for the interior doors.
Because the fob will only get you in the doors.
Right.
So if you need to get in any rooms or any other things, you're going to have to have a key. So it makes it two parts.
Now, the system we've got now, and I need to review that, I might say it personally, but is that sort of universal in most school systems, the way we're doing it?
If there's one of the priority standards for the security assessment was to have that ability for responding agencies to get into the schools.
Okay. No, no, that's all I got.
Thank you.
Next, we have, again, the Innovative Schools Model Budget Setup. So this is the last year, correct, Ms. Karen? Am I correct? We, okay, we can't have an extension, but it is, it is technically the last year of Innovative Schools money. Again, I passed you out a new one. None of the money changed on that. It was just the cost centers. Under new business, we have a resolution honor in our custodians for the fantastic job that they do keeping our schools clean and also safe. And as I said to County Commission, everyone's job is safety. You also have the TISA Accountability Report with the TISA funds. This became a state requirement that we have an accountability report. It is posted online for feedback as well. But it was required of all systems to have a third grade goal. And with your third grade goal, you had to reduce the number of kids in those lowest categories by 15% over a three-year period, and I'm glad to say we've already did that part of the goal. We've actually exceeded our third grade goal, and we've actually exceeded our college and career goal. Is that correct, Ms. Christie? So we have exceeded two of those goals actually already. So that's the TISA Accountability Report. We have three out-of-state trips tonight, one for the National FFA Convention, and then two for Raiders and all service Raiders Nationals. We have several board policy revisions tonight, and I expect at the next meeting we'll have several more. The first one is the District Records Policy. That policy, there's two options, and we did recommend the second option. And basically, when someone does a records request, it goes through our Human Resources, which is Ms. Tanya French. And so that's the option we're recommending. That was in the previous policy as well. The next one, Instructional Program Policy, that's a minor change as far as we can't discriminate or express hate or anything to any different groups of individuals. Again, that was based on some new state legislation this year. The next one is reporting student progress. This one, I want to clarify at the beginning there, it says in certain number of weeks here, that should be nine weeks. That was what is in the old policy. But this one also adds in that we provide the universal reading screener to our K-8 students each nine weeks. That was part of the new law, that in addition to a report card that you're sending home, those universal reading screeners. We currently use the state provided one, Ames Web. So now all parents get those, which typically our schools were sharing those in parent-teacher conferences and stuff anyway, so it just adds it to the actual policy. The next one, Revision of Employment of Retirees Policy. This one is where this year it sunsetted in '25 where we could have a basically retired teacher come back on limited reemployment. Retirement changed several different options, so now it's more hard to fill, so this just updates that policy with those, that language. The next one, I know we just approved a revision to this one, but now we have another revision to the wireless communication devices. So throughout this policy, we took out phone and added in wireless device, but also last week, the week before, we had a couple different instances where students were being referred to court. And so this brought up a long conversation. We talked with Randy Wright, we talked to the judge and the DA, and I talked to Mr. Wright about this. We wanted to change the language in this policy that says filming, recording, or distributing any violations of the law with technology would result basically in the court referral. Not if they broke a school rule, but if they broke the law by distributing obscene photos of someone else, something to that extent, and they would receive a court referral as well. So I just wanted to clarify. Any questions about that one? I know that was.
The reason they want that changed is because they don't want to deal with.
The next policy that I'm bringing to you tonight is the grading system policy, and I figured this one would have a lot of conversation about. Throughout different meetings with teachers and then with our school administrators, it's been talked about several times, of changing the grading scale for grades 1 through 8 back to the seven-point scale that we've had in the past. Okay? So I did ask the principals at our last meeting to come up with what that scale would look like, and then the why behind wanting to change it. What is the reason that you're asking me to take this to the board? Because any times my administrators come to me with a question or a concern, I try to support them in their endeavors. And they really talked about a couple different things. Number one, they talked about just the overall perception of the grade, and in the, the current scale is 60 to 69 is passing. And they felt like that bar was too low for our students, especially in grades 1 through 8, and they felt like it gave maybe parents a false sense that their child was ready to go on when they're not actually ready to go on, and they don't have true mastery of some of their skills. Okay? So those were the major points that they brought out with that lowered scale. And they, they said, you know, they just felt like it was lowering the bar for our students. One of the things that I did talk about, and I made a note of in the Director's Report, if you decide to pass this policy, I think we need to decide when it's going to be implemented because we are technically 1, 9 weeks into the school year on the 90 to 100 scale. So I think we would need to be cognizant of that. Again, I always will support and back my school administrators when they come with, to me with a reasonable concern and a reasonable why, as to why. So I think that one deserves some conversation and some consideration. Again, the high school policy has to stay the same because that is dictated by state law. And our system, along with many others, chose to apply that also to our grades 1 through 8. And I'm leaving out kindergarten because they're on standards-based.
I think that's why we decided to do that is because of the high school. I would hate to see it changed back after only one year. And I can understand what they're saying, but then again, why don't they increase the rigor at which the students are being taught so that the 60 is beneficial to them? You know, just changing the number, I don't think is going to actually influence the achievement of the children.
I think there could be a lot of conversation around that because.
There could.
I think there's, and you've been, you're a teacher, a former teacher.
Yeah.
As I told them, it doesn't take into account any grade inflation. We also know separate from this that the state is turning around TCAP scores quicker than the past, which means we do have a current board policy in place, as dictated by law, that we have to apply those scores to a student's grade on the last, make sure I'm saying this right, the last nine weeks' grade. So I think parents will start seeing that discrepancy between what you might be scoring on a state standardized test versus a score, and that may bring that nine weeks' grade down. It may bring it up, may bring it down, so.
My biggest concern with this is, I would like to see this presented at the June 1 board meeting rather than now because if we put it in policy and it gets on the website, it's, all it's going to do is cause confusion because we've got a policy that says we post within two weeks of making the policy, et cetera. So I think it's just going to cause confusion, especially since parent-teacher starts tomorrow.
Today.
Yeah, some started today, but I mean, most systems are doing Tuesday, or most schools are doing Tuesday, Thursday, starting tomorrow, so there, it's going to cause a lot of confusion.
Let's give it a little time.
So I'd like, I'm not against changing it. I have some, some questions about it. I started, I meant to look it up earlier and forgot, so I looked it up downstairs earlier to see what Cumberland County and Putnam County had done. I didn't get to a couple others. I was going to go to Onata and Scott County and Piki County, but both of those say that it's, it's across the board. They're staying at the 90 for now. So that's why I think I'd rather see this presented in June so that it's, they've got the month of June, the month of July, before school starts in August, and it's already in our board, you know, what goes out to them. Because I think if we try to change it January 1, what's good before Christmas isn't good after Christmas.
It would be, and I don't discredit them.
And I think it would just cause confusion.
Well, you'll have your TCAP scores back by then.
And is this the second year that score in range? Is this actually the second year that we've been in that score?
This, this school year is the second year, yes. We've done one full year and one nine weeks so far, I think. Is that all right?
Yeah.
Which one is it, Mr. Tompkins? Is it second or the third? You said two or three. I don't know what you're saying. This is their third year? Okay. I don't, I don't disagree with changing it either. I just don't agree with the change in the middle of the year. Really, I mean, I'm just agreeing with what you said. I think it's something that the parents are going to get confused about, and it's going to be, how do you, I just think it needs to be done before the school year starts.
So that can be something, depending on how you make your motion, we can bring back. Again, as I pulled out in the Director's Report, you know, I do, like I said earlier, I will back and support my school administrators 100% when they come to me with a valid concern. And I think they had some very good reasons. I was a little worried about the date, as I stated in the Director's Report, and given that notice, but I am totally not opposed to it. We actually had, fourth year? We actually had the school administrators to vote on it during the, the meeting that we were at, and every one of the elementary school principals said change it, so.
What, Ms. Hall, what type of timeline did they think would be appropriate?
You know, really, they did not bring that up into the conversation.
I just was curious as to when they, because they are in it every day. I didn't know.
And most of them, a lot of them tonight have parent-teacher conferences. I know South did, and we've got some volleyball games and some different things going on, or there'd be more here tonight.
Thank you.
I asked several teachers, and that was their big concern, was like, I'm not opposed to changing it. Some were completely against changing it. They're like, leave it unilateral so it follows them all the way through. Some said, we really didn't want it changed to begin with. Can you please change it back? And others, most of them was like, don't change it now. Change it next school year because if you change it now, we're doing grading cards tomorrow, and that's trouble. And I get that.
You don't want to switch horses in the middle of the stream. There's a whole lot of sense in that. Yeah. Let it ride.
Okay, the next one is Honor Roll Awards and Class Ranking Policy. Again, on this one, we actually have the next one to rescind the policy. This is the model policy, and so we brought over the Val Victoria one into this one. It's actually named a little bit different, but it is 4.602 Honor Roll Awards and Class Ranking. So we'd like to rescind the one that's just eighth grade Val Victorian, Salutatorian policy, and just have this within Honor Roll and Awards. The next one, Revision Emergency Preparedness Plan. Within this one, it just calls out the clarity around the fire, the fire and safety drills required by law. So that's really the only change to that policy. The next policy, the Threat Assessment Team, if you'll notice at the bottom, the new reporting. There's two things here I would point out. The first one is according to the state law and statute, if there's a credible threat, the system has 48 hours within to notify parents or families and guardians. That is the state law that went into place July 1 of this year. The other part, let me make sure, it's in this policy.
I want to say that we, we looked at that last year during a situation, and it said 48 hours.
And then the last part is the very last paragraph, and it changes the reporting. Typically, to the board members, I give you a monthly, a month behind report count of threat assessments that's been conducted. This one just lines it up with the state required reporting. We have to turn it in quarterly to the state, and so this just does the quarterly reporting to the board as well. The next policy is Questioning Students and Searches. The prior policy was actually just called Searches. It is called this one, Questioning Students and Searches. Basically, the only revision that we've made that deviates from the model policy sent to us from TSBA is we would like to replace principals with school administrators throughout the policy where it's applicable. Because on any day, there might be a principal out, and it would be the assistant principal who would be the designated to do that search. And all of our principals and assistant principals have been trained in the search, questioning students.
My only question on this policy is on the second page where it says that if the school research, or the school resource officer searches a student based on having probable cause, that the principal shall notify the director of schools or designated. I just think maybe we should put some verbiage in there as when notified because they are, they don't have to notify when they're doing the search. They can notify the principal after they do the search, so.
So the SRO is not notifying, it's the principal that has to notify.
Right, but they don't have to notify the principal until after the search is done. This makes it sound as if they've got to notify them right then to do the search. It's kind of how I took it. Does that make sense?
Mr. Wright, do you want to look at that?
That does have a number five statute there next to it, probably based on.
No, I'm just concerned that if SROs feel that they have to notify principal before they're allowed to, I mean, they shouldn't have to notify principal before they do their search. They should, they're going to in the event of an immediate threat, but if they see probable cause for something else, they're going to do their search and then tell the principal after the fact. Does that not make sense?
Typically, the principals are with the kids when they do any searches. I mean, we've not really had the law come in and search a kid for a law situation yet. So if it was that situation, maybe, but typically.
Yes.
I think I know this policy, because of the way it's worded, when it says SRO and probable cause, they would have to have probable cause, their prime.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm assuming the search would be imperaneous, notification after.
After.
But I understand what you're saying. It doesn't exactly say that, so if you wanted to modify that, say, as soon as practice after the search, and after the search. If certain interpretation is made, possible, however you want.
Yeah, or as SROs.
I think that would be fine, certainly would not run foul of that court. That's what I talked about. Saying, hey, you've got to be, it's a reasonable time after the search. Certainly, I don't think you want to delay the search because for that search to happen, they would have to get primed.
That there should be an administrator there on premises. I want an administrator to be there.
Well, here, okay, so in the event that they see, they assume that a student has a weapon, they have probable cause to search because they see something. It's not my place to determine that's theirs. But then they have probable cause to search, but they may, do they have the authority to go on lockdown? Do they have the authority to get on their walk-in and say, hey, do a soft lockdown to all of this, or, you know what I mean?
I think you've got to use your example. With a weapon, you're talking about exited search, safety.
Right.
They can hold it, et cetera, like other, let's assume that it's a drug. That's, as we all know, a vapor drug, something like that. That's what's going to be in this situation. Not talking about exited search plans, somebody gets a, so.
And again, the timeline is just for the principal to notify, not SRO to notify.
Right. That's, that was my concern is I just didn't want it to us putting a limitation on an SRO versus just when the SRO tells the principal about, hey, I had to search so-and-so for thinking of this, then, then they can let you know. Does that make sense?
And typically, our SROs work. And typically, our SROs work very hand in hand with our school administrators.
Yes.
I mean, they do. I've got two more things to go over real quick. Two more items on the end, collaborative conferencing. The teachers' union has reached out, so we are requesting that the board appoint a special question committee. That's the next step in the process for collaborative conferencing, and that special question committee serves a role of doing two question survey. And so once that two question survey comes back, if it comes back that the teachers want to collaborate, da-da-da, then we'll continue with that process. But the board needs to appoint the special question committee. I am recommending that you appoint the two people, Sher York and either Sarah Wright, the FCEA president, or Ms. Tammy Terry. That's what happens when you're in the audience, Ms. Tammy. Either one of those two ladies to that. Again, it's a simple process that they send out that. And then finally, the last one, old business, the revision of family medical leave policy. I think Evan and I were going around about this last time, and so it depends on which lawyer you ask to interpret the law. So I called him and said, we're both right. Interpreted the way you did.
Yeah, they saw it the way I did, but...
TDOE. So, and it is our recommendation that the board approves both and allows the teacher to choose whether they want them in the full six weeks, the paid parental leave, or if they want them in one week increments. Either of those would be a help to any school system, rather than a day here, a day there, a day here for parental, you know.
So why, if they can go either one or the other, why have we talked about it for 30 minutes in the meeting?
Yep, so.
It's either this, it doesn't make sense.
Yeah. Because, yeah. And it was in the fiscal letter, and I shared a copy of that with you, Ms. Casey, saying in the fiscal report, and it basically said that, you know, that either one or choose one. So I'm recommending you select them both, and that's all I have.
Any questions on any of these items she's discussed that you want to talk about before we get into our meeting?
Now, that was the motion that we tabled last month, is that correct? What was the second one?
No, the other one was the sick leave. I put that in the director's report.
So we have to deal with those two first, sick leave?
I did not put sick leave back on there. We talked to, Ms. Casey and I talked, we talked to Mr. Wright. We did not have a good option to come back with, other than the model policy. And so the current policy still on the thing?
While we're talking about that, there is one thing that has bothered me about that. You know, when we discussed that, I thought that we were going to wait about doing anything much on it, and then evidently, the policy of the county has been to go ahead and require all the teachers to fill out a paper before they...
And that was in the old policy, not the three-day one.
It said they can, it don't say they will. See, that was an optional thing, that I assumed that there was a problem, and it was not practiced before, was it? I mean, it...
No, no.
And, you know, Ms. Tammy, I don't know if she's back around there or not, huh? You know, she had said that at one time, that that had been done, and I didn't say anything, because I'm about half nuts anyway, and I don't...
Ms. Tanya, I think you were talking about Ms. Tanya.
And actually, I asked some of the teachers that've been around longer than me, nobody can ever remember doing that. Honestly, I don't, you know, I don't know. But it sort of bothered me that we had continued with that. I thought we were going to wait, but I mean, I just misunderstood, I guess.
So in other words, if we do nothing with it, it just resurrend back to what it was? So according to Robert Schroeder's orders, we don't have to address it?
Right.
See, I'm confused about the verbiage when you bring it back up. How will you bring it back and not bring it back the same way it was?
Well, it wouldn't, it dies. If you don't vote on it tonight, it stays.
And if you bring it up again, it'll be in some other form.
See, that...
Right.
Okay. So you can...
That's clear as mud, isn't it?
You can bring it up in a new and improved version to where it won't be the same? It'll be interesting.
If you bring it up like it was, Roberts will come and get you.
Yeah. Yeah.
Is there any other discussion on any of these revisions? What about the grading scale? I guess the grading scales, what was more concerned about?
Grading scale, I think, should just be left till June, just removed from the agenda. Does that make sense? Because I think if we address it at all to change, you're either going to have to deny it and let them re-bring it back, or just remove it from the agenda and address it later.
We can remove it now, we can remove it now before we start a meeting.
It's on the agenda, let's deal with it.
All right.
Humor me.
All right. Does anybody else need to be humored tonight? Is there anything else on here we need?
No, talking about that policy with the grading system, if we put to start next year, like...
If we put to start next year, though, we have to have it up on our website.
I'm talking like, next August, like next school year, not January.
Yes, but if we vote to approve it tonight, as it was presented, then it has to go on our website within the next two weeks, because that's our policy. If we make a change in a policy, we have to put it up. It does, it can say in there that it's going to be, it's going to change, the effective date's going to become such and such, but I think it's still going to be like, if that makes sense.
Why don't we just vote it down? And then if you want to bring it back up in June, put it on the agenda, and we'll see what has happened between now and then.
That's a good idea, darling. I like it.
Thank you.
Or do like we said, case, let it be like it is until you bring it up in a new form.
There you, well, yeah. Maybe we'll all speak a different language by then. Hey.
I have a question on the minutes from the last meeting, and I asked Christie, because she writes them, and I didn't know if she wrote them, or if she just gave her notes to somebody to write, so I'll ask her that. But on number 14, on the voucher bonus guidelines, there is no details in there on what was approved, and I think that should be listed in our minutes. So I'd like to see these minutes re-presented at the next meeting. That says, you know, what we actually approved, because this is our, this is our legal document that says what we did. It's not a policy that went somewhere. These are just the guidelines that we approved, so it needs to be in detail, because this is not a policy that went in place. Like, if we approved regular standard bonuses, that's a policy that goes in place, and it shows for everybody to see, this is not, that was not the case.
So what do we need to do as far as tonight?
Not approve these and bring them up.
Yeah, not approve these, and just, she has all the details. She went through all of it. She's like, I've got all of it. I said, okay, good. Yeah.
I hate to use this five-letter word, but we need to table the minutes.
In other words, we're not going to talk about the last meeting moments, tonight, or minutes, whatever they would be. This has already got a...
I actually don't know what the rules is, are there rules that you have to approve the minute?
Yep.
Well, what if you don't? Do we just go home?
They may dislay there, I guess.
Actually, I think what you can do, you can postpone, you can either postpone indefinitely, or you can postpone until a date, you know.
I know, I know table it next time.
Right. I mean, like I say, I have a little bit recently, but I'm pretty sure you can postpone also, but, you know, table would work fine, anything.
You've got to have the person that made the motion to approve it, and the person that seconded it, has got to make a motion to rescind it, and then bring it back up next month.
It's already...
Or you could just make the motion to deny, and then they'll re-present whatever their new presentation may be. It may be the exact same, or they may have come up with something else that they want added into this between now and then. But if you, but if you make a motion to deny, and then it's re-presented in a new form, you don't have to make that motion, or make a motion to rescind your motion, because it's a new thing.
What kind of mass confusion are we really going to have if we go ahead and pass it?
You're not going to lay here at 6:30 tonight, is what I'm telling you. Yeah.
But what kind of mass confusion are we going to cause if it goes, if we, just humor me for a second, and pass it and put the start date? I'm just asking. Is it going to cause mass confusion?
And if anything...
If it's in your policy, and you put that start date in it, and we vote on it, then that becomes policy at that start date.
And if anything, it's...
I think that's right.
Why can't you pass it with stipulation that the information that she wants put in it will be put in the minutes, and then brought, it can be presented to us next month?
Wouldn't even have to be brought back up if she put it, it goes into effect next school year, and it's voted on.
We're talking about two different, we're talking about two different things. We're off the track here. Let's just back on it.
That'd work.
I'll make that motion, I'll make my motion in a minute.
I'm afraid to start to meet. Is there any other discussion before we do?
No.
I think we need prayer.
Well, our attorney was going to leave, but I'm afraid, I think he's afraid to now. All righty, I'll talk my meeting to order. All right, you have your minutes in your meeting. Did you decide what we was going to do with them?
I make a motion that we do not approve the minutes, so that we may approve at the next meeting, after changes.
After revision of the minutes. I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion, a second, any discussion on it? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed likewise, motion carried. Your director's report and your financial report, they're both in there. We don't need any action on those, unless any of you have anything you want to discuss about them. And our public comment letter, is there anyone on it? All right, don't have anyone today. If we had anyone on it, we'd have them so confused, they wouldn't know what they're going to talk about. All right, number three, the YES parking lot ceiling bid recommendation, Rollins paving coatings for $14,000?
We accept it.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Now, that includes all the parking spaces, those behind, those in front, anything that's a parking lot there, correct?
Would be the whole parking lot. Thank you.
All righty, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed likewise, motion carried. Number four, educational freedom bonus budget amendment for 808, $808,968.54.
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed likewise, motion carried. Number five, the public school security grant budget setup for $42,395.98? Have a motion and a second, and since that's your new setup item to spend money, we'll need a roll call vote on that.
Okay, I do have a question before we go to that.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of stuff.
Do we have a list of everything that's being spent?
You had a budget narrative on the back. On the back page. So it did not itemize the complete number of door locks or cameras, but those are the only allowable items. So you have the budget narrative that went with the grant to the State Department.
Summarized on the back.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Go ahead, ma'am.
Yes.
No. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
All righty, 841 against, motion carried. Number six, invaded school model FY '26 budget setup, for $1,296,149.18.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed likewise, motion carried. Number seven, ma'am?
That was a setup, too.
All right, we better go back and re-roll call that then. On number six.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, 940 against, motion carried. Resolution of honoring custodians, number seven.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Have a motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed likewise, motion carried. Number eight.
Are they with us here tonight, sir?
There is one of them here tonight, so Mr. Andy from York Elementary, and he does a fantastic job.
Yes.
Thank you, darling. I didn't know the em was here. All righty, that number eight, your accountability, PISA accountability report.
I make a motion, we accept.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed likewise, motion carried. Number nine, 10, and 11 are all out of state trips.
I make a motion.
Do we need to read those motions, or everyone you're comfortable with what's in them? All righty, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
But is there any discussion on them before we get that far? All those opposed likewise, motion carried. 12, 13, 14, 15, and 16 resolutions.
I make that motion.
I entertain those, there's one motion. Have a motion and a second, is there any discussion on any of them? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed likewise, motion carried. 17, revision of grading system policy 4.600.
I make a motion that it's tabled per our attorney's request.
Are you talking same attorney I'm listening to?
He said to table it. I went with what he said. We've agreed the last two meetings, y'all tried it down.
Please someone note that.
Someone put it down.
All right. All right, I have a motion, do I have a second? Somebody second it before they change their mind.
I'll say that, I'll say that. You know I'm going to have a question about this. Why are we tabling this when we want to revisit it in June? Why don't we just vote this down?
I'll get that, because when we table it, if we don't bring any action till then, it stays the same till we bring other action, right? We can bring it back just like it is, is what you're trying to say. Then, when we bring it back up in June, we can bring it back just like it is. We don't have to revise it to change it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome, young lady. All righty, is there any other discussion? All those in favor, table number 17. All opposed likewise?
Aye.
Okay, we have... All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed likewise? Motion carried. Rescind the eighth grade valedictorian grading policy 4.703.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed likewise? Motion carried. Rescind the eighth grade valedictorian grading policy 4.703.